Call the board of supervisors in the session for Monday, February 14. And welcome everyone in the chambers today and online. We'll start with public comments. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are on the agenda. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Individuals wishing to comment on a public hearing will be given the opportunity during that respective hearing. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Does anyone wish to address the board? Saying no one in chambers, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
All right, we'll move to the proclamations. There are no proclamations for approval at this meeting. Moving on to the approval of minutes of the meeting, February 3rd, 2022, which is a budget meeting. Board meeting, February 7th, 2022, and budget meeting on February 7th, 2022.
The motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Can I will second that?
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to consent items. The following items will be acted upon by a single motion without separate discussion unless the supervisor requests a specific item be considered separately. We have Divitt's Golf Shop Beer Permit, Timberline Golf Liquor License, and St. John's and Placid Five Day Beer Permit.
I will make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent items as presented. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Carries. Next, we go to procurement procedures. We have a request for quotes to current model year heavy duty tandem axle trucks for Dubuque County Secondary Roads Department. Do we have Anthony on? Context?
It does not appear as though we have Anthony today.
Okay.
I did not have any questions.
Do you have any questions?
Nope, I do not.
Make a motion to for the procurement procedure for the model year heavy duty tandem axle trucks.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Next is a request for quotes for snow equipment to be installed on the two tandem axle trucks for Dubuque County Secondary Roads Department.
Make a motion to approve that as well.
And I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request for quotes for the snow equipment. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Next, we'll move to public hearings. First, we have the proof of public hearing showing the public hearing for today at 9:00 AM.
I will make a motion to approve the proof of publication for the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the proof of publication. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries. We'll go to zoning case. The Zebra C. Charles 01-01-22, Ron and Kimberly Ryder, and Adam and Maggie Domeyer, A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential. We have Tammy for context. Tammy, enter.
Yep. Good morning, everybody. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential, 1.53 acres to allow for the construction of a new home on the farm for their daughter and son-in-law to continue to assist in the farming operation. This property is located 2.44 miles southwest of the city of Dubuque along Skyline Road and is legally described as the southwest of the southeast, Section 33, T88 North, R2E Tableman Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Ronald and Kimberly Ryder. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and the west. B2 Highway Business to the southwest. The B2 Highway Business to the southwest on zoning case number 1128 of 01 was to rezone two acres to allow for the construction of a storage building to store excavating equipment used for their business and to bring on existing non-conforming structures also used for their business and bring it into compliance. This will be the first home on this property. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and there was no city notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. So this is, this is just a simple, what we would normally do is an A1, A2 rezoning. So this young couple can get out and start helping, continue to help, but get a home on the farm.
Okay. Questions?
A motion to open the public hearing.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Anyone in chambers wish to address the board? Regarding this? Anyone on Zoom? Good.
Motion to close the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I will make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 I'll make a motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, and that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to the next item. Zoning case 0102-22, Daniel and Jean Goll and Colin Dolphin and Melissa Goll, A1 Agricultural to A2 Agricultural Residential. Tammy?
The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agriculture to A2 Agricultural Residential, 1.7 acres to allow for the construction of a new home on the farm for their daughter and future son-in-law. So they can also continue to assist in the farming operation. This property is located 0.93 miles south of the city of Balltown along Horseshoe Road and is legally described as the southeast of the southeast and the east part of the south 20th southwest of the southwest, all in Section 7, T90 North, R1E Jefferson Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Daniel and Jean Goll. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the north, south, east, and west. R1 Rural Residential to the south, R2 Single Family Residential to the south. The R1 Rural Residential to the south on zoning case number 9,028 of 789 was to allow for the construction of a single-family dwelling. And the R2 Single Family Residential to the south on zoning case number 0506 of 05 was to allow for the construction also of a single-family home. This will be the first home on this property, and there are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Four rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners and the city of Balltown was notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 9 Agriculture and Natural Resources, Page 134, Objective 3.1, and Chapter 8 Housing, Page 122, Objective 12.7 may apply to this case. This again is where this young couple is already working on the farm. And they're going to be getting married and they're trying to locate closer to the farm so that they can even put more time in on the farm.
Motion to open the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in public hearing. Do we have anyone in chambers wishing to address the board regarding this matter? Anyone on Zoom?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion to approve the rezoning.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the rezoning. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion to suspend the requirement that this amendment be considered and voted on for passage at two prior meetings.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the requirements. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Make a motion that the amendment be adopted, that the zoning administrator be directed to enter the appropriate changes on the official zoning map, that the auditor be directed to arrange for the publication of the amendment and portion of the official zoning map as amended in the official county newspapers as required by law.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Aye. Carries. Next, we'll move to zoning case 05-11-21, Timothy Kendrick Trust and Kirby Kendrick, A1 Agricultural to PC Plant Complex.
Okay. The applicants are requesting rezon from A1 Agriculture to PC Plant Complex, 10 acres, to be allowed to get an existing campground with six cement pads and two cabins into compliance with Dubuque County Health and Dubuque County zoning. This property is located 3.17 miles northwest of the city of Luxembourg along Bourne Lane and is legally described as the east half of the northwest of the northwest, the south half of the northeast of the northwest, and the north half of the northeast of the northwest lying west on Bourne Lane and the southeast of the northwest, Section 6, T90 North, R2W Liberty Township, Dubuque County, Iowa. This property is owned by Timothy Kendrick Revocable Trust. Zoning in the area includes A1 Agriculture to the north, the south, the east, and the west, and it is adjacent to both Delaware and Clayton Counties. The property owners had started construction of a new cabin home when they came in to request a septic permit in April of 2021. At that time, it was discovered they had not applied for building permits. When they applied for the building permits, it was determined that they had been developed several camping sites as well as several structures, including ravions and storage sheds, and they had not been permitted. It was also determined that the A1 agricultural zone property was being used for multiuses for the family, which resulted in having to request to rezon to a PC plant complex. The PC plant complex would contain six cement camping pads that have electricity and a cabin home on a, at a pavilion, a fire pit with a seating area, an existing cabin, and a kitchen shed. The zoning administrator, along with the watershed department staff, Army Corps of Engineers, Barrington Group, and Mr. Kendrick conducted a site visit on the property to review and determine what potentially would be in the floodplain. This case originally went to the zoning commission on May 18th of 2021. The zoning commission tabled the case waiting for the Army Corps of Engineers determination of what, if anything, was in the floodplain. It was determined by the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and the Army Corps of Engineers that none of the structures or cement pads were in the floodplain. Mr. Kendrick, along with David Meyer from the Barrington Group, came back to ask for the case to go back to the zoning commission for review again. The zoning commission heard the case again on January 18th of 2022. The commission had much discussion about the application that night and whether or not the application was completed application, and if it provided enough information for the zoning commission to determine if this case should be approved or denied. The zoning commission did vote on a motion to approve, and that ended up with a 3 to 3 vote. There was one member absent that night. Three of the board members felt the application was complete, and they were in favor of the PC being approved. The other three board members felt that the case did not provide a complete application to be able to determine if this should be a PC. Mr. Kendrick requested that his case be moved forward to the supervisors for their decision. On January 20th of 2022, the zoning office received an updated application from the Kendricks providing additional information to the original application that has, that has been provided in your packets. Here. Papers are sticking. There are no previous rezoning cases attached to this property. There are no special use permits attached to this property. Six rezoning notification letters were sent to the property owners, and there was no city notified. Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 12 Land Use 180, Objective 6.5 and 9.1, and Chapter 11 Watership Management, Page 163, Objective 1.3 and 3.4 may apply to this case. So it's, it's pretty much what I explained there. They were building, you know, did not know they needed these permits, did know they needed a septic permit. When they came in to get the septic permit, the health department said, you don't have building permits. Mr. Kendrick came to our office, and that's when the whole thing started where we found out there were several structures out there. Then the concern was whether or not they were in the floodplain, which is, you heard me say, that was all taken care of. Mr. David Meyer worked with Mr. Kirby Kendrick on making sure all those things were done. And then it went back in front of the zoning board, and we did have one member absent, and it was a 3 to 3 vote. And so now it's in front of you, and it's not that this case wasn't without controversy. But the Kendricks are here to speak, and if you have questions for me, please.
You had stated there were some changes made to it?
Yeah, so when the original application came in.
Show us.
Um. Oh, boy. Let me see here. You'll have to let me look through the packet. So the original application, if you go to page three, which it'll say one of two, which is our zoning application. So in that packet, it should be there. So that's, so that's the, you know, that's what the original would have, would have looked like. And then when we had our zoning meeting, the conversation was, well, it needed to be more to the PC. The PC can be very complex. We turned in the same kind of application. The Kendricks feel that they had a completed application. And when and after the zoning meeting, David Meyer worked with Kirby Kendrick, and then they sent an updated version of the application answering every question for the PC, which is in your packet.
And the page number for that is what?
Three, four, five, six. Page 11. Go to page 11. It would be this long, heaven, this long sheet here. Yeah. Yeah, that would be the, that would be then what were all of the questions that were asked the night of the meeting that they then responded to. Even though they felt they had a completed application, if these were the questions at hand, they asked, asked more.
Can you see that? Can somebody print that out for me? Is that possible? I don't remember seeing that in the packet. Thank you.
I'd like one too that I can read it. I'm kind of new at this yet, Tammy, so.
No, 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 that's, that's totally fine.
I guess we made these amendments. Why isn't it going back to the zoning board? For approval, why is it coming to us?
Because the zoning board made their decision. It's been moved forward to you. And so we have had other applications in the past where if new information had come in between the zoning commission and the supervisors, we always provide that to you. So, so that's what's happened here. After the meeting, Mr. Kendrick and Mr. Meyer went back, listened to everything that was being said, and then came back and said, okay, if we feel we've completed an application, but if you don't, if there's something we can do to help the supervisors feel that the application is more complete, we'll go through every part of that PC, and we'll answer every question. And that's what they did. They felt they had answered the questions in the beginning. But obviously, some board members felt that the application could have been better. And so they did that and provided that, and that's when we provided that to you a couple of weeks ago.
There was also a motion on January 18th to table for this very thing.
Yes.
And that failed.
Yes, it did.
It was a 3 to 3 vote, and that failed, just like the motion to approve failed because it was a 3 to 3 vote. Right. So one of the concerns that was raised at the meeting is that the process of moving the application through was also flawed. That the application under a planned complex needs to go to the board, the zoning board, for opportunity to do this. So by taking this intervening step and coming directly to us with a brand-new application, you've completely circumvented the zoning board and the process in the ordinance of the, of the way the planned ordinance is supposed to come forward. So I mean, I, I think it's, you know, well, listen, obviously, but we're, we're jumping ahead here.
Well, no, because when the zoning board voted, that vote was 3 to 3. That's a denial. So when it's a denial, I have to bring it forward.
If the person requests that.
And they did.
But there was changes made to it. So I guess in my thinking, it should go back to the zoning board with the changes to pass through the zoning board and then come to us.
And, and I understand that, but we, in the meeting that night, it was requested that we bring it forward. And then the Kendricks have given the information for that.
Thank you.
Do you see this in the packet, Supervisor?
I didn't see this.
I think it's in the separate zoning one, right?
I only saw 31 pages tied to this. So.
Very likely that there are 31 pages tied to this, but I mean, in the, in the overall, when you look at the packet at the bottom, it, it has 70, page 79 of 197.
I missed that, I guess.
It's page 11 of 31 specifically related to this case, right?
Right, for this page.
Right there. Same document.
So at this time, I'm going to make a motion to table. I'm not going to be prepared to. I haven't seen all these pages. I'm sorry.
We do have a public hearing on the agenda, so I think.
And we can certainly have the public hearing if you'd like, but.
Well, it's not if I would like. It's on the agenda. I would have.
Sure.
Right. They have to have the public hearing.
But supervisors, technically, you would make a motion to go into that public hearing, and should the supervisors not go into that public hearing, you would simply vote nay. So we have no obligation to hold a public hearing today. You will vote to go into public hearing.
Correct. That's what I would like to. So would you like to go into the public hearing now, or?
Need a motion to go?
I will make a motion to go into the public hearing.
I will second. Have a motion and a second. Go to public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
We are in public hearing. If anyone that would wish to address the board, chambers regarding this? Go to the podium. State your name and address, please. Of three months.
Jerry Segworth, 22987 Segworth Lane, Holy Cross, Iowa. Part of the reason I come in here today, I'm on the zoning commission. And we sat, we sat through this, and yeah, it got shot, or it got basically a tie, 3 to 3 tie. But these people had filled out an application, and they use, we don't, I've been on the zoning commission for a fair amount of time. And we only had one other one since I've been there was the, the Nuns last year, about a year ago for their plan complex. And they, the Kendricks looked at that application, filled it out, you know, in accordance. There was, there's no less on their application than there was on that one. And I, for one, think that we should go ahead and revisit our application process and have a specific application for PCs because it is fairly complex. But they filled it out, in my opinion, the same as the last one was. And we didn't have a lot of basis to, to go back and say, well, okay, it's, it's better than this one or worse than that one. It was pretty much the same. And, you know, we they, they had some, some issues that, you know, they're running into that they're not, that they were uninformed of as far as building permits and stuff, but they've been jumping through every hoop we've thrown up to them. And all the questions that were thrown up that said, oh, we can't, we, you know, we need to table this, whatever, were all questions that could have been brought up to these people in the nine, 10 months that, that we were waiting on the, on the return from the, from the DNR. We wait until the final hour, and you want to table it and push these people off again? They can't, you know, they can't proceed with what they're doing until we sign off on it. And, you know, they, they realize that, that if they go to a, to a PC, their taxes are going to go up. They're, they're in a place where they're not going to use any of our services, and they're going to pay taxes for it. I mean, notwithstanding it, I think that because we, and I'm not meaning the girls in the office because they did an awesome job handling that, but we as a zoning board need to, need to look at the application process, and if we need to tweak our, our application process, so we get all the questions, so we can ask these people the questions, the right questions the first time, rather than making a long, drawn-out affair. I don't think it's fair to them that we don't have our act together. And that's, that's blame, that's on me too, because, you know, we've, we've had such very little experience with them. You know, and, and this is actually the, the Tammy and the, and the other girls at the office came up with this, and, and this is the best way to, to resolve a situation, and it's something, quite frankly, we can learn from it. But I don't think we need to hold them back because we're learning. That's not their fault. So that's.
Thank you, Jerry.
If you got any further questions, feel free to ask.
Anyone else wish to address the board and chambers here? Go ahead.
Good morning. David Meyer with Barrington Group, 105 West Main, Manchester, Iowa. Um. Kind of reiterate what Jerry said. We've worked through this for quite a long time with the staff at the zoning, and, and they've been very cooperative and patient with us. And we've jumped through as many hurdles as we thought was necessary, and then some. We've offered our help to improve, improve the process if possible on getting this taken care of. It, it's been a struggle. I, I remember early on doing the original survey work. It was about this time of year that I was climbing the hills out there to, to get this thing situated and taken care of. So, um, I guess, what, what questions do you have? I'm fairly intimate with the, the whole complex that we've got going on here. If there's anything that I can provide to help you guys understand it, whether it be today or in the future, you know, that'd be, you know, please bring them forward to me today if possible. I, I've called the zoning staff multiple times on different issues with this and draft copies, and, and they've been very patient with me to look through everything, and also been very professional too, so there, there's, it's a compliment to them too. So they're, they're doing what they can, but if there's any, any way that I can improve that communication line between you guys, the zoning board, and, and the staff, please, please let me know, and, and we can go from there. So does any one of you have any questions that I could answer and help with?
I have the same question that's been hanging since May. What is the purpose of this planned complex? And even in your statement here, it continues to say, it doesn't talk about purpose. It talks about proposed development. It doesn't say the purpose, and I've attended every meeting, and I've heard Mr. Kendrick speak. And the purpose has been this, and then it's been that, and then it's been some more. So, you know, I'm just not sure still what the purpose is, and it's still not stated on this application. I don't know what the purpose of this planned complex is. So I don't know that you're going to be able to give me the definitive answer. I would have preferred to see it be in writing, and that's why I asked for a copy of this, so I could read to see if it was there, but it isn't.
Sure.
It says, see below, see the statement below, and I read below, and I don't see a purpose. And this has to comply with something about, you know, there's, there's a general public interest in this as well. I'm not saying it has to be open to the general public. But the general public has to benefit by the proposal, what its purpose is, and those things are still missing. And that's why I would, I mean, I think it needs to go back to be developed. You, right out of the gate, what's its purpose? And you need a consistent and not changing purpose.
Sure. So I, I guess in, in trying to answer that, that, that question is that the purpose that they have is they're, they're trying to improve what's down there for themselves. I mean, that they've got a cabin, and it's zoned as a single family. Sorry.
Two cabins. There's a single-family home and a cabin, and other improvements. Yes. And now there's a single-family duplex that the assessor has determined to be a property as well. Yes, and now there's a single family duplex that the assessor has determined to be a property as well.
It's a single family home, the assessors have assessed it as a single family.
There's the original cabin and the new construction, one, two. I don't understand why you're shaking your head, no, that that's not two residences.
No, I'm agreeing with you, there's the original cabin and then the new home.
So if two on a, on an A1, if two on A1, that's not allowed, is it?
No, it's not.
So then there's, they came to us because they wanted to build yet another residence, another structure.
No, no, they're, they're trying to get in compliance because of the, the, the original cabin and the new one that had been built.
Why did they come asking for a septic permit?
Because they knew that they needed a septic permit, that's the one thing they knew, they did not know they needed a building permit.
They were directed by the zoning board to cut to, in May, to stop all construction and to stop everything. They were in a floodplain at that time.
Yes.
So there's no other planned construction as part of this planned complex?
No, everything is built, it was built when we went out there. They were to the stage where they were looking to put in the septic. That's when we all became involved and found out about it.
So can they use the current structure without the septic system?
No, they cannot.
But they still have a building on the A1, it's a residence that has septic.
And that, that is the existing that was there, yes, yes.
So it might be incomplete.
Do you have anything, Drew?
I, I should, same question, and I'm not sure if you were allowed to answer, we're going to get some back and forth. But, you know, what, what's the, the general purpose of the changes and the use of the property?
Well, originally, originally is what, it was all, this, this ended up starting out to be is, is we had to, we're kind of caught in a catch twenty-two because of the septic permit. We weren't allowed to go forward until it gets zoned. Once it gets zoned, then we can get our permit to put the septic in and then that's the, the struggle. And, and the, the original, to, to try to eliminate the confusion. Originally, this structure was, we really didn't have any, any classification for it because it was a duplex. And there was never any formal discussion on what that structure was. So that may have been the confusing part of this was, originally this was talked about as being a duplex. Well, the defined people at the assessor's office went out there and then made their, did their job and then they went through and discovered with their judgment, then made it a single family dwelling. So that's how we came into that, maybe that's where your confusion is.
My confusion is, I believe Mr. Kendrick told the zoning board it was a duplex.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, again, you know, something in writing that from the beginning to the end is the same would be helpful.
Sure, sure. So, so I guess getting back to the original question is, the purpose of this was originally this was, this construction was started and it was a basically discovered that we need to have a septic permit because we're going to build another cabin on their own property. And that's when the confusion started of, well, we, we need in order to have all this stuff put together and get it zoned correctly, then we can get the, the septic permit and go that route. So the, the, the purpose of this was to get to, to provide another dwelling on the property that was there and simply to have septic for it. Now, the, the public view or the public use of this, I mean, the, the Kendricks have tried to go through and we're, we're working with the Edco School District to get a, a public, semi-public tours of their, their tree production and, and such like that. So I guess it's kind of clouded on, on what exactly the required purpose needs to be. I mean, I mean, in your view, what would you consider the, the, the purpose of a structure like this on timber ground in northwest Dubuque County? Is it, is it supposed to be a playground, is it supposed to be a park, is it supposed to be educational? What, what's, what's the purpose? I mean, and, and i-it's, it's, it's rural America. I mean, there's not a lot of purpose that's going to be out there that we're going to really see. And in order to get to this property, you have to drive through Clayton County anyway. There, there's no accessibility directly through Dubuque County to get there. So that's where the clouded portion of this kind of comes into play. So, does that help you at all, or?
A, a little bit, maybe I, so it, it's private property, right?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not my decision on what, you know, you're intended to use this. So, so it, you know, I don't know if it's, it's wonderful, if it's used for recreational, it's going to be used for residential, it's going to be used for fun or unknown. That's my question and I generally feel like you're not answering it, but that's, if that's your.
And I would go, I guess I would look at it and maybe Kirby can help me too, is I, I would look at as recreational. Wouldn't you say that that would be a use of this property, Kirby?
Yeah.
Up to the podium, please. State your name and address, please.
Kirby Kendrick, one zero five East Maple Street, Edgewood, Iowa. Um, yeah, so there was my, I have, I have a decent sized family and during the pandemic, everything was closed down, obviously. And we spent more time down there than, you know, ever had before. And we're like, you know, this is a, this is a place we want to continue to keep being and getting out of the, you know, I don't know if you know Edgewood, but a town of nine hundred people, so I'm going to say the city and get into the country life.
I guess as all three of us have been there.
Okay, but, um, so yeah, it was, I, I would say it's probably more recreational, you know, we, we deer hunt. We have a couple side by sides, we can ride through the timber. So it's personal use. Does that help?
Yes.
Who, there's some Dave brings up cloudy as a word trying to describe this and I would have to agree that cloudy would fit. muddy water fits better.
It does.
A lot better because given the location of it and it just doesn't look like anybody was being very honest, to be real honest about it. They just kind of thought, you know, let's just build this and nobody's going to know the difference. Once we got caught, then all of a sudden, it's like we didn't know. That's kind of hard to swallow for me. Uh, we have one person online, is there anybody else in chambers that would like to speak regarding this? Uh, one person online, yep. Ms. Caitlin, are you there?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone. I also sit on the zoning board and I guess I wanted to just attend today and see kind of how things unfolded. And I guess I just feel like I should explain a little bit where I sit with this. We do have ordinances that where the zoning board doesn't get paid, I think we get thirty dollars a meeting. We spend hours developing zoning ordinances, really hours. And we developed, or somebody developed in the past, one point, one dash, one five point one three, which is a planned complex district. At some point in time, some zoning board said, this is a great idea, this is how we want to do it. And there was public comment and the supervisors accepted that and that is our law. That is how we do things in Dubuque County with a planned complex development. My, I guess my perspective on this is that in May, when this came in front of us, it did not comply with anything under that, our law, the zoning ordinance. Nothing was addressed, it was, at that point, it was six acres, which wasn't even the, you're supposed to have at least ten acres for a PC. None of these other things, preliminary plans went on there, the written statement, which is very specific. And the, the ordinance itself is a page and about a third, so it's not complicated. It's, it's pretty straightforward, the language, and I said at the time on the record that this does not comply with that. There were a lot of other issues at the time, so it came back in front of us, once again, it had not complied with that. And there's a whole other sort of process where, which is part B of that, which is about review because this is different than a regular zoning request. And none of that's been complied with either, it's a big process. They've spent a lot of money developing this land for their private use, but they have not complied with simply following what they're supposed to do to, just get in front of us as a complete application. I'm a little concerned that the advocacy by our zoning administrator and taking sort of a, a personal sort of advocacy role in this, I don't think that's what should be happening, it puts the county in kind of a, I don't know. It, it, I, I just feel like there might be a liability problem there if there, if Kirby's been relying upon everything said by the zoning administrator and that's maybe not been correct, I don't know. But that's, I keep hearing that and it makes me nervous about that. So the process hasn't been followed at all. It has not come to us as a complete package either. The, following the ordinance that this, this zoning board is supposed to follow and you guys are supposed to follow as well. And the merits are very concerning, there's six thirty-foot camping pads on there. It's a very developed, a very beautiful piece of property, there's been a pond constructed. There's canoe storage for multiple canoes, there's sheds, there's a constructed outdoor kitchen, there's a fire ring with seating. It's not just some cabin in the woods, it's, it's, it's very developed. And I'm still not hearing today that there's any purpose, I don't know what the purpose is. My last point is, yes, the Trappist nuns came in front of us, we all understood what they were doing because they're already doing it. And it's not our job as a zoning board to say, you haven't complied with this. In this case, it was obvious there was no compliance. But the administrator let that one go through, that's fine, I mean, that's done. I don't think we should let another one go through just because that, the process hadn't been followed in that first one. So that's what I just wanted to, to put on the record today, thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Ms. Caitlin, is there anyone else on?
Chair, is Eric Schmeckel there, is he with us?
I have David George here that would like to speak on Zoom. David, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm very, very new to the zoning board, this was one of the first zoning meetings I was in attendance after replacing Ken. As somebody not familiar with previous PC cases or what has gone on in the past, I felt that just looking at the materials that were presented and the uh, PC plan complex zoning rules or guidance was not followed, at least I couldn't follow it anyways. I was the one that suggested to the Kendricks to go item by item in the zoning PC complex zoning rules to address each individual question that was being asked of them. And I see now that that looks like it's been done since we've had that meeting. I was in favor of tabling it, but I was not in favor of approving it until we saw that. And I see now that maybe you have what I suggested been done by the Kendricks in providing more information. I, I didn't, couldn't read it on, online here, so I don't know what is that exactly in it. So that's my perspective on it. I also agree with Jerry that maybe we need to do a better job of setting up a form dedicated to the PC zoning that makes it easier for someone to apply. Because if that's what the problem was, that a layperson was not able to properly answer the zoning questions in the zoning law, a zoning document, maybe that's what we need to do. I don't believe that there was any assistance early on from the, from any legal advisory. Kendrick's, my family may have just done it their, theirself, with sometimes a lot of people do on regular zonings like we've been reviewing here from the A1 to A2s. But I think that, that needs to be reva- relooked at, just like Jerry had said previously, to make things easier if the common layperson is supposed to answer these questions. As Catherine pointed out, in the first application, it did not even meet the clear and concise acreage of ten acres. So I don't know how closely it was looked at originally, way back when this first was applied for. But you got to do something to make this thing easier to understand too. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else that would like to address the board? Is Eric Schmeckel on?
He can always speak to us when we go back to our own discussion too.
Mr. Kendrick was requesting to speak again.
Yes, go ahead.
I just might could close a remark. Yes, I completely take fault and understand that we did a structure without approval. Not that we were ignorant in saying, oh, they'll never catch us. I mean, the assessor came down within months, so we're, we want to pay our fair share of taxes that we are needed to, but, um, I guess working with the zoning administrators' office and these two ladies specifically, I don't know how far we'd be along this process if it wasn't for some guidance. I guess, in my opinion, I look at them as public servants to help mediate the process to get us in compliance with Dubuque County. So I guess I feel that it's wrong to say that they cannot provide us information and guide us along the way to help get us to be a legal in Dubuque County. So I thank you all for your time and I hope you understand and trust that we're now trying to come around and do the proper steps.
You do have another person on Zoom that would like to speak?
Hi, yes, this is Samantha Voist, I am the current chair of the zoning commission. Um, and I know there's been a lot of comments and, and input as far as how the process has gone. Um, I think that when we began the journey back in January and May of last year with Kendricks, they did present an incomplete application. And the goal has and should be to figure out how to bring them into conformance. So we as a county are able to benefit just as much as the property owner is. At this point, I do believe that the Kendrick family has answered any questions and the zoning commission has had the opportunity to not only voice their concerns and requests and desires within the plant complex. But we've also had ample time to discuss and review as a zoning commission in our meetings. Um, I'm just not sure what more is necessary to move forward. And again, I think it's, and I've said this before, I do believe it's our responsibility to the public to be clear on what our expectations are. Um, if that means that we have the opportunity to make improvements, um, we can and should. But to vote this down or put it back on the zoning commission with no additional expectations or requests from anyone seems like a stalemate and leaving our, our, the Kendrick family in a place of the unknown. Um, I also think that it's our responsibility to work as a team and collaborate within the administration, the zoning commission and the supervisors to make sure that we are very clear on what our expectations are and we can only work to improve that. Um, but at this point, I don't see any reason to not vote, whether it's in the supervisors, it gets tabled and sent back to us. But I don't know what else would be missing at this point. So, and I do appreciate the Kendricks taking the time, working with the state level individuals to make sure that they were in compliance. Because my biggest concern with the case was that they were not meeting flood zone, that there were issues with how placements on the property were, and we've confirmed that that's not the case. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Samantha. Is there anyone else on Zoom world that would like to speak?
Here, I do have another question for, go ahead, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Kendrick. There was some discussion multiple times related to the floodplain in the packet. Can you describe or give me an assessment of what the DNR and the state or others have said related to the floodplain and your plans? Give me a s- assessment of what the DNR and the state or others have said related to the floodplain and your plans?
So, looking back on the first part of this, go to, there's another sheet in there. It would be sheet, my sheet four. Black and white. Contour lines on it.
And while you're assembling that, you know.
There you go, right there.
I'm looking for, is your development in the floodplain or not?
No, it is not.
That was my, my big question, but I appreciate it.
It's quite a loaded question when you get into floodplain. So in a, in a nutshell, this. Plan complex district is in a valley and in a valley, there is a cross section that flows downhill like all rivers and streams do. And the DNR, because this is an unstudied area, in other words, there's not necessarily, was not necessarily a floodplain. Determination in this valley originally. So that was the reason why it took such a long time to get the floodplain established, the numbers that you see on this sheet. So. You have to basically had to go down there and determine the high point and the low point, make sure that the offset for these. Structures and improvements were above that hundred year floodplain. So they basically calculate a grade that goes down the stream. Structures out there meet that criteria is out of the floodplain. So. The DNR had to review this on a per each basis and every structure on there was reviewed. Not just a general blanket area, but every structure was reviewed to make sure there was.
That review was done after this had all been completed. It came to us as a violation. It was notified to the DNR as a violation of the floodplain. So the fact that the maps have been redrawn is great. That it's no longer in a floodplain, but I do think we need to clarify that, that it began. All of this construction occurred in violation of the floodplain at that time.
I disagree with you. Here's why. Now, I'm sorry. I disagree with you and I'm sorry.
This is why Eric Schmeckel would be helpful to be here because when.
Yeah, and Eric was involved too, early on too. This, we went through originally and made the determination that all of these structures were out of the floodplain. And we created our.
Who's we?
The Barrington Group. We have certified floodplain manager and a certified land surveyor on staff that reviewed all these structures. At that time, we made the determination that it was all out and we also can, talked to the. Concurd with the DNR, or the DNR concurred with us finding that by doing this officially.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Before these structures were created, were you working with the Kendricks on this matter?
I had no involvement at all.
So it's all a matter of after the fact, as we start to look at this as a violation that your firm got involved then?
Correct. And that's when we went through and checked all of the structure and i- it's, it's a miracle that they're all out. And it's ama- it's amazing to me. And we went through and checked every camping pad, checked every building, every structure and everyone's out. And that's when we had to and was requested by the zoning department that we had to go through and, and go this. This route and we sent it to the DNR specifically. Because we, we do a fair share amount of flood projects the way it is with, without the DNR. I mean, the DNR is involved, but a lot of times we create the information and then submit it to the DNR and then they approve it whether it's right or wrong. So. Any further questions? Hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. Nothing.
Not in public hearing, I don't. I have more discussion.
Right, the follow-up question I, I would have, maybe not listed a floodplain, but uh related to access. To the property, uh can you describe the public access? And then any private roads and then specifically maybe related to safety and related to. Uh vehicles getting in there to assist.
Okay, and on would be my sheet two. Um, there is only one access into this complex. You got it right there. There's only one access into Dubuque County and it's via that road that's on the left-hand side of the nor, the top of the page. That's Born Lane and that is the Dubuque County Road. In order to get into this area, we have to go through Clayton County. That's the only way in there. So there is Born Lane, which is a sixty-six foot right away up to. If you move your hand to the left and down that easement, there's an ingress egress easement that's created below that. Yep, to the left right there. There's a line above that. Right there's where the right away stops, right about there. And then we continue to sixty-six foot ingress egress easement to access both of those. Parcels that are located on there, lot two and lot one on that sheet. So yes, there's accessibility and that'll be, you know, and one, and once that is recorded. It, it's accessible by the general public.
And Dubuque County maintains Born Lane?
As far as they should be. I, I don't know if they do, but I.
How we get up and around.
Exactly.
But maybe in practice, if, if Mr. Kendrick could answer that question, if he knows, um, I mean. This is the first, I might, my, that was one of my guesses, like who's maintaining this thing, this road?
Yeah, um, Born Lane. It's, I mean, I guess when it snows, um, if we want to get down there, we are, we've been opening up the lane. Um, Clayton County gets it to Born Lane and then.
They stop.
They stop, which I get to and I understand Dubuque County, you know, they got to come up and over around the hill and.
We don't, in practice, Dubuque County is not maintaining that in the winters, what you're stating.
Correct.
All right, thank you. I'm good. I don't think I have any further questions.
Go out of open session looking for a motion?
One more chat up there. I don't know if anyone else wants to talk.
Message from our GIS director. Born Lane was created with the addressing ordinance change in two thousand. Addressing change.
Twenty-two years, it's been alive.
Jeff. The motion to close public hearing.
And I will second that.
Have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favors, signify by aye?
Aye.
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 I just submit to my colleagues that. The Hendricks can bring this back to the zoning board. They can choose to do that and they can have a, um, if, I still think that the zoning board is going to find that this application is incomplete. And the ordinance does step through one thing after the other. They are going to have to come up with the purpose that they all live with, but. We have a, an extraordinary violation of our zoning ordinances here. And that is the way that it's been characterized by zoning staff and water, and watershed staff to me is extraordinary. And there's concern that if we somehow make this fit, pound a square into a round circle. We're not holding the development of A1 property or property that isn't easily accessible. We're not. Holding everyone to the same standard. That there's a need to follow the ordinances. I don't think that we need to say this is the final answer. I bet the zoning board can get to close with these folks if we can get it all to match up every time. Um, but I'm, I'm on, I just am very uncomfortable. Finding a way to approve this in light of the missing information, the lack of the process. And ultimately that it does form its own precedent, so to speak, about how we do zoning violations.
Do you have any comments?
Well, I, I'm glad it's here, it's the Board of Supervisors, because I think, you know, that's why we're here for the, you know, in this case of tie. Um, you know, we do get recommendations. Many times they're unanimous and those tend to be a little easier. Uh, but uh. You know, I'm, I'm, I think it's our role to uh be able to resolve these types of issues. Uh, I, I do see quite a, you know, a lot of work, a lot of history. But you know, from where we're at right now, looking at it today, you know, we do have a plan. We do have documents. Uh, there has been review of the floodplain. Um, it is on private property. We, you know, discussed a little bit about the use of the, the private property. And you know, in general, my, my experience, I've got a friend who's got a, I guess you'd call it a cabin, but it's in Delaware County and it's. On a stream and trout running behind it and they do many of the things that Kendricks had mentioned and. I've been all around the country from. Colorado to Oregon, seemed uh many places maybe similar to this, uh out in the uh wooded areas. Um, and it seems like a, a good use of land use if you're the private owner that owns it. Uh, I'd much rather prefer that than clear cutting everything and. Putting up a ten thousand feedlot. Um, so, so I'm, I'm generally in favor of it and it sounds like we've gone through the process and uh it's up to the Board of Supervisors to, to make the decision and. And I feel uh it'd be an undue burden to, to make the applicants go through the process again. It seems like we, we've got the information we need to make the decision and the board should do just that.
Uh Chair Potter, I do have Eric Schmeckel on Zoom if you have any questions for him.
Have to go back into open session with that or?
Sorry, Stan.
Eric, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Uh, Anne had a question for you regarding the Kendrick uh application. Rezoning.
Good morning, Anne.
Good morning. I just wanted to um have the benefit of my colleagues hearing some of the discussion that you and I have had. Um, did you want to explain any concerns that you have about this case um and its current status before we make a decision?
Well, as far as, you know, floodplain questions, I believe that probably was already discussed. Um, but we were out there. We did meet with uh DNR out onsite. Uh, back in, back in the spring of twenty-one it was and did take some drone footage. Uh, the Kendricks did work with their consultants to, you know, get the area uh surveyed and elevation submitted to the DNR. Uh, and they did work to get the area uh through the, the FEMA application. Uh, letter of map amendment has been completed and it has been approved uh for the area where the. I guess campground, electrical site and so far, so far is. So it has, it is out of the floodplain at this point. It has been approved by FEMA. Um, you know, just, I, I think some of the conversations I've had with others. Uh, landowners in general in Dubuque County has been, you know, what's the process like when? Contractors, builders and others do things, you know, and then ask for forgiveness afterwards. Um, just, you know, the comments that I've gotten, I think from, from others in the community. Not necessarily in this case, in general, but I think just, just speaking from, you know, some of the feedback I've gotten from them has been. How can the county allow things after, you know, we're always asking kind of for forgiveness after things have been completed? Um, and that was, you know, I, I, it's a, it's a difficult site. Uh, I, I just hopped on, I, I, you know, I agree with Supervisor Wickham. It is. A good land, you know, good use of the area as far as uh, you know, the actual. Campground and, and it's, it's a beautiful, beautiful site down there. Um, but it's, it's setting precedent, I think, for others. Contractors, builders, just others in Dubuque County of, you know, kind of going back to the enforcement level of, of some of the, the county guidance, I guess, is my only comment I have on it.
Eric, do you think it would help for um, just for the county, that the things you described about people after the fact asking for forgiveness? Do you think it would be helpful if one thing you could tell uh folks is that we always required them to comply with the zoning ordinances and the application process itself?
Yeah, I, I do. I believe, you know, whichever ordinance it, it comes back to, you know, if it's stormwater, if it's a floodplain. Um, you know, it seems like, you know, setting that precedent and with our ordinances and the, the permits that we do, erosion control and so forth. Um, you know, for some, some of the builders, they know, uh, you know, our enforcement uh le- levels are. Um, I think we're, we've gotten better over the, over the time with some of our ordinances, but I think they, we need to uh, we need to look at kind of the procedure of how we're actually enforcing some of, of the county ordinances. Um, but yes, I would agree with that, with that statement and that I believe that. Uh, saying precedent is, is really important for others uh that are going to look and see and, and, and the way that I think the public views the enforcement procedures.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Jade, do you have anything for Eric?
I do not.
Um, is there a room for one more comment? This is Dave Schneider, Schneider Land Survey. Um, I guess.
Hearing is closed, Dave.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. I tend to agree with Anne that it should go back to the zoning board with the changes that were made. I think there's support there at this time. Uh, Mr. George and Ms. Boy, Boyce both spoke. And uh. I think it would be advantageous just to go through that, to get it, to pass the zoning board before bringing it to us. I guess I don't see a purpose of having a zoning board if we're going to overrule the zoning board or any board for that matter. If they say no and people are going to come here and we're going to say, yeah, well, why are we wasting people's time on a zoning board? I think it needs to pass the zoning board to get up to us. That's my personal opinion. You didn't have seven people at the meeting and that's why I think it needs to go back there with the changes that were made, presented to the board again. And I think with some of the changes from what Mr. George and Ms. Boyce said. I think you would probably come up with a different result. And just make sure the application is filled out properly for all the information. Said yourself that it's difficult. I've never filled one out, so I don't know. If it's something that needs to be changed, well, then we need to get a change to make it simpler for the general public.
Absolutely.
Well, maybe I'll just make it since we are at the supervisor's table here. So the, the good news for the applicants, you don't have two noes. I think you've got to. Uh, send it back to the zoning, but maybe to, to, for today's process, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Is there a second? There is no second.
I'll make a motion to deny the rezoning.
And I will second that with the caveat that it goes back to the zoning board. Have a motion and a second.
In discussion. There's two things I would point out. First of all, a denial is a denial in my opinion. And this would deny this application. If Mr. Hendricks and company wishes to go back to the zoning board, they always can. They can file a new application. And they can begin, but when you talk about a planned complex. You need to address all of the elements and I'm speaking directly to the zoning administrator. There is the subsection B of review that has never been done. And if there's any question about the review. The county attorney can help you step through that. So that we get this from top to bottom, we might ask that a county attorney assist. We get this done from top to bottom out of the gate.
Yes, and, and the county attorney is aware of this and we have had conversation about it. And yes, we do see some flaws in the, in the PC plan and it is our intent to fix those things, but we are in the middle of a case and we couldn't change the process.
Further discussion? Have a motion and a second to deny the application. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Curious, the application is denied. Sorry, Mr. Kendrick. Um, I think we just need to, uh, I think I explained what I think you need to do and I think it can be uh expedited. You know, to assist you for getting things ready for by spring. Thank you. Hey, moving on, go to the approval of Platts. First is a resolution to approve the final plat Adams Hodges addition. Tammy?
Correct. The property is owned by Richard Hodges and Christine Camp Hodges and Barbara S. Ed, Ed Adams Revocable Living Trust. And is located one point one seven miles southeast of the city of Dubuque along Southern Hill Circle.
and is located 1.17 miles southeast of the city of Dubuque along Southern Hill Circle with a total of 4.140 acres surveyed. This property is owned R2 Single Family Residential. The purpose of the plat is to increase the size of the adjoining residential home lots. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 2.274 acres surveyed with an existing residential home and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot two is a total of 1.866 acres surveyed with an existing residential home and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot one and lot two will use existing entrances off the private road, Southern Hills Circle. And there were no additions or corrections required for this plat and there are no mortgages on the property and the signatures while current. This plat's been reviewed by myself. As Platts officer has all the required signatures, I respectfully recommend approval. So this is just, there's a vacant lot in between two and the neighbors are each purchasing some of that lot.
I've walked this land. We looked at it ourselves out in Southern Hills. This is a good, this is a good resolution of that empty lot.
Further.
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat Adams Hodges addition. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did you say aye, Ann? Sorry.
Aye, yes.
Passes. Next, we have a resolution to approve the preliminary plat of Country View Estates, plat number two. Tammy.
Okay. This property is owned by Ronald and Jesslyn Bryner and is located 0.19 miles northwest of the city of Dubuque along Hales Mill Road with a total of 83.708 acres surveyed. The property is owned R2 Single Family Residential and C1 Conservancy. The purpose of this plat is to create a residential subdivision. Preliminary survey creates 25 lots. Lots nine through 33 are a minimum one acre in size. And each lot shall have its own individual septic system. There will be four shared wells and the Dubuque Water Department would recommend service lines from water main to the, to the building structures to be copper with a controlled valve, curb stop and box near the right of way line. A copy of the water utility plan showing the water distribution piping from the water wells and individual water services lines will be submitted for review by the Dubuque Water Department. Lots nine through 33 have an approved residential entrance on permit number 21-03 off of Hales Mill Road. The survey creates a 66 foot white, right of way access easement that will be utilized as public utility easement and stormwater conveyance easements. The site grades and stormwater management facilities are subject to change in size, shape, location, type, based on the final design as dictated by the stormwater calculations, the cut and fill calculations, and concerns generated during the preparation of the construction documents and the final review process. This plat's been reviewed by myself as Platts officer has all, and I respectfully recommend approval. This one is just the beginning stages. So this is the plat, the development process. And again, you've asked Supervisor Wickham in the past, do we see these? And yes, we do. And there will be a lot of work that needs to be finalized before you'll ever see the final plat.
And Eric has been working with them regarding watershed.
Yes. Eric has been working with Mr. Schneider and we just had a meeting again about it the other day. So they're not near the final stages, but this is the preliminary for you to review. And this was in favor, seven to zero from the zoning commission.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution to approve the preliminary plat.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Country View Estates, plat number two. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat of Greenfield Place. Tammy.
The property is owned by Timothy Greenfield and is located 4.90 miles east of the city of Dubuque along Ridgeview Drive with a total of 33.264 acres surveyed. This property is owned R1 Rural Residential. The purpose of the plat is to reduce the size of the lot two, which will be purchased by Timothy Greenfield's son. The remainder will be added into lot one with Timothy Greenfield is where he's building a new home. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 28.264 acres surveyed and is the site of the new home for Timothy Greenfield. Lot two will have a total of five acres surveyed with an existing home and shed that will be sold to Timothy's son. Lot one and lot two will have access off of Ridgeview Drive. There were no additions or corrections required for the plat. The bank consent is signed and attached. Some of the signatures were over 60 days old and they included the surveyor, which was November 23rd of 21, and owner's consent December 1st of 2021. This plat has all the, has been reviewed by myself as Platts officer has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. So this is owned residential and they're just creating another residential lot.
What was the vote on the zoning board?
Uh, this again, I believe was a seven and zero favor.
A motion to approve the resolution approving final plat of Greenfield Place.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of Greenfield Place. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passive. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat of RJ Ranch. Tammy.
Okay. This property is owned by Mary Lou Johnson and is located 1.29 miles northwest of the city of Asbury along Asbury Road with a total of 27.696 acres surveyed. This property is R1 Rural Residential and C1 Conservancy. The purpose of this plat is to separate the existing homes and shed with approximately 6.5 acres to sell to their daughter and son-in-law. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 6.524 acres surveyed with an existing home and shed and it will be sold to Mary Lou's daughter and son-in-law. Lot two is a total of 21.172 acres surveyed and it will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot one, we use an existing residential entrance off of Asbury Road and lot two will use an existing field entrance off of Asbury Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat and there are no mortgages on the property and all the signatures are current. This plat's been reviewed by myself as Platts officer has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. This is pretty, again, pretty straightforward explanation of what's going on here.
I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for RJ Ranch.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the final plat of RJ Ranch. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Curious. Next, we have a resolution to approve the final plat Stone Quarry number five. Tammy.
Okay. This property is owned by Harriet Family Trust and is located 1.09 miles southeast of the city of Dubuque along Old Massey Road with a total of 47.28 acres surveyed. This property is owned A1 Agricultural and A2 Agricultural Residential on zoning case number 0920 of 21. The purpose of this plat is to separate lot two for sale purposes. The survey creates two lots. Lot one is a total of 43.37 acres surveyed and will remain in current ownership and agricultural use. Lot two is a total of 3.91 acres surveyed with an existing home and building and it will be sold. Lot one will use an existing field entrance off of Old Massey Road and lot two will use an existing residential entrance off of Old Massey Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat. There are no mortgages on this property. Some of the signatures are over 60 days old and they included surveyor November 30th of 21, engineer December 2nd of 21, Platts officer December 21st of 21, county planning and zoning December 21st of 21, owner's consent November 30th of 21, county assessor of December 2nd of 21 and county health November 30th of 21. This plat's been reviewed by myself as Platts officer has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval. This was a vote of six to zero with Kathy, Kathy Caitlin abstaining. And this is taking the existing property and creating this lot around it.
Separating off the buildings.
Yes. Yes.
Make a motion to approve the resolution approving final plat of Stone Quarry number five.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the final plat of Stone Quarry number five. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Curious.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tammy. Next, move to action items. The board may approve, deny or table any action item. Have a resolution to authorize the chair to sign the municipal advisory services agreement. The context done that given or?
Yes. Good morning supervisors. This is Auditor Dragato. This resolution authorizes the chair to sign the agreement with DA Davidson to begin the process of rebating our municipal bonds. We had a work session, God, was it last week?
Was, yes.
Jeez, last week regarding that. The work session later today is unrelated to this. DA Davidson was asked to come back and just give a little bit of information about our debt, how much debt we have and how much debt the city has. This resolution is straightforward. It does not incur any direct costs to the county other than the, the only indirect costs are my time and some staff time. I respectfully recommend your approval.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign the municipal advisory services agreement. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Moving to communications. There are no communications. Move to appointments. Disabilities account, disabilities council. There is one application.
Gentlemen's here. Mr. Van Steenberg is here.
James Mastenberg? Ann Steenberg? Okay. Or a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Van Steenberg.
Normally I think we would do these on the quarter. I think we might have done some things differently with the disabilities council, trying to get them up to speed. And I, I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Van Steenberg's application to this commission.
And I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Mr. Van Steenberg to the disabilities council. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you for your interest. Go to the open vacancies for informational purposes only. Move to personnel requisition for permanent full-time business office assistant at Sunny Crest Manor. Or a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve the personnel requisition.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for Sunny Crest. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Curious. Next, we have a motion to approve the personnel requisition for full-time health director. Be to replace Patrice Lambert after her retirement.
Make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the personnel requisition for the health director. All in favor signify by aye.
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 Related to that, if I might just, you know, the health board did ask us to go out for a proposal for a consultant or a specific search assist. And Dawn's not here to get status, but I don't know if anyone, I think, were we all on Zoom for that health board meeting? So we're all aware of what's happening. Very good. Thank you.
Do go to public comment. At this time, anyone may address the board on matters of which are of concern to that person and which are not agenda items. Please go to the podium, state your name and home address. Please be aware that the board is limited in their ability to respond to such inquiries and I will quote, prohibit the board from deliberating or acting on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual remarks are limited to three minutes. Do we have anyone in chambers who wishes to address the board? We have no one in chambers. Do we have anyone on Zoom, Mr. Dragato?
We do not.
Okay. We will move into our, do we need a break, I guess?
I would take a motion to recess for five minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recess for five minutes. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are in recess until 10:30. Aye. We are in recess until ten thirty. You ready, Jay?
I am.
Ten thirty, call the board of supervisors back into session. We'll start with a work session with the RPA representatives, Chandra.
Oh, thank you supervisors uh for this opportunity today uh to address you regarding the RPA long-term transportation plan. Uh, the idea today is to explain what RPA is and what the long-term plan is and what we are looking from you today. Uh, so as you are aware, RPA is a four-county uh planning uh agency from the Iowa DOT. There are eighteen of us in the state of Iowa. Uh, and then in our area, we cover Dubuque, Delaware and Jackson counties. We have fifty-two cities in that. And the RPA board is governed by a policy board. Uh, RPA is governed by a policy board which has four big cities which have population more than five thousand and then four counties where supervisors are part of it. And then the board also have a technical committee there, the county engineers and the city engineers are part of it. Now, this excludes the area in D-Max, uh, area and city of Dubuque and part of D- County, which is in D-Max, that's the different top management. So we are talking about area outside the D-Max vision uh within the RPA. Uh, the RPA needs to create a long-term transportation plan every five years. Uh, the importance of long-term transportation plan is any projects that you're seeking federally should be part of the plan of that's a requirement from federal highway and the Iowa DOT. Now, most of the three-year projects that is reconstruction, resurfacing and restructuring, those projects are maintenance projects. So they are already counted in the long-range plan. Uh, what we are looking is projects that are ever and beyond that and which are standalone projects, which will meet a vision and goal set by a board. Uh, so what we are requesting board today is uh, are there any projects within D- County that are not a three-year project and that you're seeking funding from federal highway to raise grant, uh, any other new plans coming through the IAJA transportation bill? Uh, so if that's the case, we need to list that in the uh, in the long-range plan. We did have a discussion in this regard with the county engineer. Uh, as of now, he doesn't have anything that is airborne beyond a three-year project. But if the supervisors think there's some, we'd love to have their input on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chandra. Any questions or anything? Jay, none for me? And you have anything for Chandra?
Chandra, I don't, I certainly don't know better than the county engineer. So, but I appreciate you asking the question, of course.
So one question I have for the supervisors is obviously, uh, the county engineer did address the roads bridges. Uh, the trail systems is what uh we are interested in, and we'll be looking at uh uh, the the plan done by Dubuque County Conservation Board. And uh, obviously, we need to create a plan for federal highway and Iowa DOT with the trail rail systems in our area. So our staff will be working on that and will be including all these projects. But uh, as of now, I know that Heritage Trail is one of the uh projects that need to be addressed in Dubuque County. Are there any other projects of that scale that need, that will be seeking federally through a a grant application or special funding from the FEDS uh, in on the trail systems? Uh, as of now, all I have is, all we have is Heritage Trail. Anything else that we are missing there? Yeah.
Does that include the city of Farley's interest in connecting to the Heritage Trail?
Yeah, so the new plan, what we are creating, that's what we'll be working with each city to make sure that they connect to a regional trail system rather than having a standalone trail. Because that will make their projects fly better, and not only that, it will be a regional connectivity. So Farley connected to Heritage Trail, Eppot connected to Heritage Trail, Piasta connected to Heritage Trail. This all will be discussed with the respective cities when we are creating the plan. Uh, and there might be some on-road trail systems as we go, and that's where we'll be working with the county engineer hand in hand to see if he agrees uh with that alignment or not. And when we are done with the final, uh, we'll be bringing a draft to the supervisors for your input before we adopt it at the NPO, the DMATs and the RPA, so.
Jay, did you have something? I don't have anything.
No, thank you, Chandra. Appreciate it.
Thanks for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chandra. Can move forward to our ten thirty work session with HACAP representatives for an annual update. At the podium, thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to come and meet with you today. Uh, we completed our first year of uh operating as HACAP on September thirtieth. And we wanted to share with you the results of the first year of operation. You can see by the report that we provided you that we served over fifty-seven hundred people living in over twenty-eight households in Dubuque County. And uh, the households received over one million six hundred and twenty thousand dollars in assistance during that time. We have different areas that we provide services in. In our affordable housing and financial stability area, we provided eight hundred and thirty-eight plus thousand dollars in white heat assistance to the heating vendor of low-income households in the county. And we also weatherized, the report says three, but we actually weatherized thirteen homes in our first year of operation within the community. We also replaced an additional ten furnaces in homes of low-income individuals as well. And implementing those weatherization measures and replacing a furnace will result in a more energy-efficient home. It's about a twenty-five percent uh reduction in energy usage within the household. Three hundred and seventy-six households received budget consultations and energy crisis crisis assistance so they could keep their lights on. And that was over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in assistance that we paid. We provided homeless housing services to fifty-five households, and that was to obtain or maintain their fair market housing. Twelve obtained housing through our rapid rehousing program, which means that they were homeless and we placed them in a residence or helped them find housing. And then forty-three households were able to stay in their residences and not become homeless. And both of those types of services provide case management to the households that we do serve. In our local assistance, we uh processed five hundred and forty-five VIDA income uh tax returns for low-income individuals in the community. Thirty-nine households were provided rent or utility supports above the uh funding that I talked about in the previous section. Twelve households were supplied with hygiene project products or diapers. Nine households got transportation assistance and one household was uh assisted with food assistance. Food assistance isn't one of our primary services in Dubuque County because we're not part of the Feeding America Food Bank. We refer our clients that we're serving that have food assistance needs to the local food pantries that are part of the Riverbend Food Bank. And in child and life, family life, we have a hundred and forty-two Head Start slots at seven different locations. And we uh have had some staffing challenges. We have uh five of those sites that are full, fully enrolled. Two, we have some staffing challenges and we're in the process of getting staff hired, and so we'll be able to move to full enrollment in the other two as well. And we work collaboratively with the Dubuque County Schools, the Dubuque VNA and the Keystone Area Education Agency to provide comprehensive services to uh the children that we do serve in Head Start. We have forty residents that are HACAP team members that live in Dubuque County, and their annual payroll comes to a little more than one million seven hundred thousand dollars per year. Uh, a couple of other things, we have hired Ron Axel as our county director. Ron's been on board for
A year.
A year. We have four board members from the Dubuque County area, uh, Ron Collins, uh, Ben Hamel, Laura, Laura Russell and Kristen Wobbin. And and we also have a couple of partnerships we want to talk to you about. One is with Four Mounds, and it's a, an at-youth training program. We are supporting that project and providing funding. They were able to hire an additional job coach, which means that they can increase the number of children that are participating in their job training program that learn a work skill while they're in the program, a carpenter, carpentry trade. We also have partnerships with uh Crescent Health, uh federally qualified health center. We have uh provided vaccine support for clinics that they've had for uh the non-COVID clinics. It was flu vaccine uh that we uh covered the cost of so they could make those available to the community. And we also have a navigator that is a full-time employee that works at Crescent that serves the Hispanic population there and helps them uh work with getting the materials they need to be able to uh access Crescent Health Services and be uh access services in the community. So Mitch, would you like to add?
Uh, uh, something that's been um prevalent here is a water program, really a city program. But we have a water program that has come down through our low-income home energy assistance uh program. I believe I said we did a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars worth of water bill support primarily in the city of Dubuque, but also in the other communities within the county as well. Uh, that's been a a big help for folks to retain water services and to help bolster city budgets to get money back into the city.
So do you have questions that we can answer?
I do. Thank you, um, Jane and Mitch for being here, and thank you for being in our community. I really appreciate that you're here in Dubuque County and you, you um, you aided us greatly in the transition from Operation New View. And so you are the new Operation New View, and you've taken on those federal grants, and I, I thank you for being here. That was a long process. And and so I'm glad that you're reporting your successful first completed year. I think that's wonderful for the residents. I, you had a listed the folks who are the local members on your Board of Directors on page seven. Of course, I know Laura Russell and Ron Collins. Are there other folks here that are from Dubuque?
Yes, uh, Ben Hamel. Now, that's uh people that were in our board seats that ended on uh September thirtieth. So those are last year's board members. Ron continues to be a board member. Uh, Laura continues to be a board member. Ben Hamel from uh Iowa Legal Aid is also a board member. And Kristen Wobbin is in our, uh, parent in our Head Start program. She's a board member as well, too. Community action agencies all have consumers and consumer advocates that serve on their Board of Directors. So we're fortunate to have Kristen in one of those consumer roles.
And in the Operation New View design, that was a twenty-eight E agreement that we all still remember. I'm sure maybe Harley, you don't need to know all that, but wow. Um, and that included the three members of the Board of Supervisors as, you know, the countywide representatives. And um, that hasn't, that isn't the case in HACAP.
Uh, no, we're a private nonprofit. We're not a twenty-eight E organization. Our board is made up of a third consumers, a third private and a third public uh officials. We don't have any geographic alignment. We don't have to have a public representative from every uh area, every municipality or county in our service area. It's just a third, a third and a third, and our board is made up of twenty-one members.
Right. So um, and what we talked about before the meeting began was the way to show work in Dubuque County excluding the city of Dubuque. So, you know,
So we will send you that information.
Yeah. Do, do you know on high level, um, I would assume that the impact is greater in the city of Dubuque in terms of the numbers that you give it?
You know, I, I would anticipate and assume it will be as well, too. We do have some uh rural Head Start, what we would call rural Head Start classrooms in rural communities. So not all seven of those Head Start classrooms are in Dubuque. They're spread throughout the county. You know, we'll go back and run the numbers, but I, I think we can all assume that the majority of the population that we serve is, could be in Dubuque, the city of Dubuque. Although we serve all of the communities within the county.
You do have an ARPA request in before as well.
We do.
Today, I don't believe is the day to talk about that, um, but just know that it's not been forgotten. We still know that it's there.
We appreciate that.
Is there something we can do for you?
I think continue to be advocates for our low-income individuals in the community that we're serving and uh invite us back to share information with you.
And you're one of the partner agencies with the coordinated entry.
Yes, we are. Yeah.
And how do you think that's working?
You know, I, I'm not, Heather is, she's our housing, uh, regional housing director. She's a member of the, she's our member to the coordinated uh group as well as Ron, I think is involved, too. Uh, you know, it, we believe it's going as well as can be, you know. Part of the issue is there's not enough affordable housing for low-income people.
The coordinate entry system is working as issues with coordinate entry as a rule, sure, but your setup here is just as functional, just as any of the rest of them.
Well, if you had some great ideas for that, I know that that actually is one of the topics or the major topic of your ARPA request is.
Yes, yes, yes. We're interested in working with the community to have, make available more affordable housing by either partnering with uh other organizations that are uh developing housing or purchasing some ourselves and developing and making it available. We do uh with properties we own in our housing portfolio, we do charge below fair market rate rent. So we're trying to make it even more affordable for low-income individuals to be able to be successful in staying there.
Well, I guess I would say to you, I see Ron Axel everywhere I go.
Good, that's good. That's what we want.
Feedback, so.
We think he was a great addition to our team. We feel fortunate to have him.
Thank you. Jay, anything?
No, thanks for what you do. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for the update, Jay.
And certainly, we appreciate your support, too. Thank you.
And Mitch, I need to remember Mitch's name. I always forget Mitch's name. That terrible, Jane, I know. So, very good. Thank you. Travel safely.
We'll move to the work session with Eric Michael to discuss stormwater permits, plans, drainage calculations for major subdivisions. Eric.
Hey, good morning again.
Morning, Eric.
Wanted to chat um and get your, get your feedback. I talked to Anthony uh last week on this, and I know he's off today and wasn't available to to chime in here. But uh, wanted to kind of talk about the process of when we get specifically major stormwater permits that come into Dubuque County, come into our office. Kind of uh the way I laid it out in the memo, you know, the way it's always kind of worked is I offer review and feedback um to, to the applicant, uh, to the zoning administrator, Tammy, and then, you know, Anthony as well, too, uh, just on, you know, the, the project, the location, uh, the practices being proposed, and then the threshold of, of how it sits and meeting the county ordinances. And I'm not a, I'm not a licensed engineer. I'm just providing feedback to Anthony. Anthony signs the final plat and reviews the, the road plans and improvement plans and so forth. You know, we're, we're much more involved in the field and the implementation part of the construction. Um, working with the contractors and builders, you know, as these things uh get developed. We haven't had a lot of uh, you know, major subdivisions in the past five years in Dubuque. I think our last big one was um Oakland Farms, Oakland, can't think of the name of it now, Oakland Ridge, Oakland Farms. But um, we have one coming up here. Uh, Country View Estates, which I believe is thirty-three lots, so it's a, it's, it's a little bit bigger. Um, generally speaking, in the smaller subdivisions, this process, I think, has worked well when we get, you know, anywhere from five to ten lots. Um, it's, it's a little bit easier, easier to manage, uh, the review process, you know, and the implementation side of inspections is a little It's, it's a little bit easier to manage the review process, you know, and the implementation side of inspections is a little bit easier. I wanted to get your feedback and talk to Anthony, just, you know, on the process of how we're doing this. If we should be considering hiring a third-party engineer, private engineer to kind of sit back and review some of the stormwater calcs and offer Anthony and myself and our office a little bit more feedback as well to, just to kind of have a third-party, you know, input. Stormwater on, on these subdivisions, stormwater is a big deal. It can be a, a major expense. It can be, it can make or break subdivisions, I think, in general for developers. So I want to be fair to them. But we wanted to get your feedback and, and figure out where something like that might fit into either our budget or engineering budget or what you might think. I, I did reach out to WHKS as one consultant in the past just to try and get feedback on a cost for something like this. And I think it would be somewhere in the tune of, you know, three to five thousand dollars, I think would be in the high end. I would think we'd get it done for less, but until we have an actual proposal, you know, I don't know what that cost would be, but generally speaking, I think a few thousand dollars would be needed for, for this third-party review.
Okay. And they have any comments, questions, concerns?
Eric, is the three to five thousand dollars, is that per subdivision or annual? What is, what is your number based on?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, each, you know, each subdivision is going to have a different cost estimate to it. It, it, it can kind of go by how many hours we believe a review like this should take. I'm guessing, you know, a review to, like, for example, in the country view of the thirty-three lots, my guess is the review is going to be somewhere in the ballpark of ten to fifteen hours total time. And then, you know, some time for a, a written report to, to myself and Anthony and the consultant. I mean, the consultant's already hiring a private engineer on this one. So, you know, they're, they're already doing that, that engineering, but the runoff curve numbers that they're assigning to soils can be debatable. And I think it, in my opinion, it's good to have another third party invested in this. But like I said, you know, the, the feedback that I'm offering Anthony and the applicant can, can be, can get into some, some pretty expensive numbers depending on what practices are, are needed to meet the county threshold for stormwater ordinances. So I would say generally speaking, this is the, you know, this is the second larger one we've had in the last five years, I'm going to say. The smaller, the, the smaller ones, I call them minors, although they're probably technically still major subdivisions. I feel pretty comfortable in the process that we've been doing and they're just much, much easier to manage. But when you get into, you know, Country View has seven different drainage areas, ridge top development and trying to protect, you know, citizens downstream property owners below from flooding and from adverse water quality impacts from a development. Now, the argument can be made that, you know, you're taking row crop out of production and you're converting it to turf grasses and, you know, potentially improving the drainage situation in, in, in subdivisions. And I understand that argument, but there's a lot of variables that go with that. You're, you're also looking at concentrated flows. You're looking at velocity control. You know, you're looking at a lot more, there's a lot more that, that goes into just kind of a blanket statement like that. And I think we're, we're doing a good job, you know, addressing it, but again, you know, is, is our office and my, my feedback to Anthony enough?
Eric, my question would be on, you know, what would you see if you did go out to a consultant? What would you see the scope? And what report would you be looking back, report that you're looking, looking to get back? And would there be recommendations in it?
Yes, that would be yes to the recommendation part. They would review specifically the, the runoff curve numbers as far as soils, the hydrographs that have been submitted. And then specifically the, the best management practices or the projects that are proposed and elevations, you know, pipe elevations, pipe sizing, that kind of stuff. We sat down with the developers and the engineer last week and kind of talked about this extensively on this site specifically. And I did get, I did get a lot of feedback from them on this. They weren't necessarily, wouldn't say they were excited about it, but at the same time, they were fine with, the engineer was completely fine. He wants to make sure it's his signature that, that what he's proposing is going to work and, and meets the county ordinance as well too. So a written report, you know, the expectations would be a report kind of reviewing the hydrograph and the curve numbers as well as just the practices themselves. And, and what, you know, what, where, where does it fit compared to what's being prepared? And, and the Iowa Stormwater Management Manual as well to making those comparisons. I did get a review back from Amy Bowska, who is a state urban conservationist. Amy and I have been friends for over a decade. And she, she did a, a pretty thorough in-depth review with myself and had, and we, you know, found, found a few things in the, in the preliminary or final plat, I guess, that's been, that's been submitted to the county. But I also, I don't believe it would be a bad thing to have a, another licensed engineer sending a letter to Anthony as well too. Anthony did say, you know, he just doesn't have the time to, to sit down and spend, you know, a few days on just specific stormwater calculations and then the, the practices being proposed.
Are you proposing that then as a policy? Anything over ten acres would go through this process?
I think that we'd want, yeah, I, I would propose that as far as a, a threshold of land disturbance. So if it's, you know, you know, we could come up with criteria of if it's ten acres being disturbed, but there's not any additional impervious area or very little. You know, I don't think that would require a, a in-depth analysis, but I think when we're looking at adding roads and homes and, you know, a certain amount of square footage impervious, that it, it does, you know, warrant kind of this, this third-party engineer review. City of Dubuque does this on some larger scale sites as well too. And they have, you know, a, a number of different engineers in-house. They'll still get a third-party analysis done in conjunction. So kind of following that, that methodology a little bit. But yeah, I don't want to, I don't think it's fair to, to pick and choose which ones we want a third-party review on either. I do feel much more comfortable right now on this country view specifically after last week's meeting than, than where I was.
Okay. I, that one does have me a little concerned up there, Eric. I'm not going to lie about it. That's a lot of houses on top of the hill. And that creek is already going up two foot when they get two inches of rain in Asbury. So, and there's going to be issues and I guess there are stabilization structures or stormwater retention basins set up in that, correct?
Yeah, they're proposing similar to Oakland Farms. Oakland Farms, if you remember right, they have a series of fourteen bio-retention cells or infiltration areas, which is a lot of, that's a lot of, you know, a lot of work, a lot of infiltration and a lot of, you know, inspections on our part, working with the contractors. This, this one has seven total bio-cells and some of them are, are pretty, pretty large. But they are not, you know, the bio-cells are their practices. There is not a detention area at all. There's one a larger one that's drained, I believe it's twelve acres. You know, twelve acres of ground plus the, you know, plus the, the impervious areas. I think the tricky part for me on, on, on these, it's stormwater calculations is, is one thing and the hydrographs, but then actually what actually is taking place when dirt starts to move. And what the values are in the report versus what actually is happening are, I think, two different things in a lot of subdivisions. And I think that's based on soils and compaction and velocity and homeowners putting in culverts. The contractors selling different lots and, and redirecting water, tiling water completely, you know, off of larger areas, larger homes and driveways to the, the single areas. A lot of that doesn't get captured in the stormwater calculations and in the improvement plans. So I think one thing that I'm trying to do is determine what all should be included a, as far as guidance and language in the improvement plans. Because in the past, a lot of this has been included in the covenants, but the county doesn't enforce covenants. So it kind of puts us into this. You know, I'm kind of facilitating the process between an HOA and a developer, but we don't really have any teeth of enforcement. And that's, enforcement's another, another issue that I plan to address this year with our ordinance. I, I, I think that our ordinance is twelve years old now. Learned quite a bit since we've done it in two thousand and ten to where we are now. I'd like to see a, a clear spelled-out enforcement policy and action directly in the ordinance so that everyone's on, aware of kind of our, our, our inspection and enforcement procedures.
I would personally like to see some kind of a trust fund where these developers come up with this idea and they're going to have to put, just say, ten thousand dollars in a trust fund that if these structures, whatever, bio-cells fail, that there's money there to fix them. Not that they're going to say, well, I'm broken. It's the homeowners association problem. Well, I think we put, if we'd have the ten thousand in a trust, once the homeowners association got the account built up to ten thousand, okay, now the developer can get his ten thousand back out, but there's always got to be ten thousand there to cover. You know, any, anything that would happen to the watershed structures.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's a bad approach. We, we've talked, I, I think extensively on, and I, and I feel like every subdivision has tried to do things a little bit differently and we've learned in the last decade on what works and what doesn't. Communicate, the communication barrier between developer to real estate agent, to home builder, to contractor, to utilities. There's a lot of, there's a lot of moving parts there in a lot of these practices and, you know, we, we can't be out there every day, you know, kind of babysitting the process. We're out there doing inspections as, as we can and as complaints come in, but I agree with you, the, kind of the, the escrow idea of putting some money aside. You know, Oakland Farms, we had them built into the covenants, a, a stormwater fee and structure for the maintenance set side of things. So that when we do a inspection, say twenty, thirty on, you know, fifteen bio-cells and five of them aren't functioning anymore, or a homeowner decided to fill it in and bypass it, and then you got a downstream property owner that's getting a lot more water. You know, we're trying to come up with ways on how the county can actually have some teeth in the enforcement side of things.
I guess I'd like to think more, a little more about the consultant and, you know, where's the, the benefit of hiring the consultant and what are you going to do with that, that report? So, you know, it's, it's an additional cost you're adding to government at this point, unless the future intent is to include that in the process. There are a lot of communities that say, governments, if you want to develop, here's all the things you have to pay for. And so I'm not necessarily advocating for that, but just to be aware of it, that when the costs start adding up, government sometimes is quickly to try to offload some of those costs. And the balancing act between development, you know, new tax rolls and then, you know, taking care of the, the public space and public water is, is what you're trying to balance. So I guess I'd like a little more information and, and/or examples of other communities that do have these requirements in there.
You referring to the engineer?
The engineer and the ten acres. And we don't have, we don't, we don't have that many developments. And, you know, I think generally speaking, it appears that Dubuque County is development-friendly. Haven't heard otherwise. I'm sure the last person at the zoning issue would, would beg to differ. But generally speaking, you know, we've got development, a majority of the new development is outside the city of Dubuque. It's, it's in unincorporated in smaller municipalities. That's where our growth has been. And so last thing I want to do is add more barriers to that.
Yeah, I, I want to look at it and I, and I agree with you, that balancing approach between costs of doing development and, 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 you know, just the, the evaluation that needs to take place. I don't think it really hampers development or slows it. And generally speaking, once a process is down, it just, it, it's, it really kind of goes back to ensuring and protecting the public with downstream property owners and so forth on calculations that are being submitted and then an engineer signing off on them. I think more so than anything, I probably could tell, you know, some of the comments I made today is the enforcement side is probably the, the most important thing that we need to try and really, you know, ha- have a developed and updated policy on the way the enforcement side takes place. I mean, our, our stormwater ordinance, you know, we have in there a seven hundred and fifty-dollar fee for homeowners and for contractors that aren't in compliance. But long-term and the maintenance side of things, I think, is, is another issue that really isn't being addressed. So I think that's, that i- is equally as important. Like I said, I, I do feel much more comfortable than where I was at from the preliminary design to the, to where we're, where we are now. Now it's just a matter of getting the, the, the correct narrative in the improvement plans that, that Anthony signs off on.
Eric, for me, I think it's always important that when you feel you need to hire help, expert, specific skill set, I want to support you in that. And I don't think it generally runs up costs for anyone. Certainly it makes overall, it costs money. It's clear that there's a budget issue. But when you feel you need access to someone to get you a better answer, the appropriate answer, I do support that. And I appreciate that you're, that you're here saying, hey, there's some things that are maybe a little bigger than we've got time to handle. We owe that to those developers and to the folks who ultimately buy those lots and build to try to get it right the best we can, use best practice. And if in Dubuque County, best practice is having a budget that's expandable up to five thousand dollars, I think that's, that's wise. I think this is you presenting us with the best, the best practice of what might be to determine with an engineer, what's the, the water issue in the water runoff. So I support this. I wouldn't, I don't have a problem with you coming back and giving us more specifics or a better example, or even a draft of what a policy concern or a policy statement might be. But I think it gets us all a better product. And, you know, as a, someone who lived in the unincorporated area with a water issue in a subdivision predating your, the ordinance, those are, they're very, very expensive proposals for the property owners to try to correct when everybody else is contributing to the problem. And what would be the, you know, the proper calculation over time, as you say, it can be one thing on paper, but I'd like to see us, if, if you feel we need to get it better and you need some technical assistance to get it right, I think it's great that we're not adding staff and we can go out into the community and, and purchase that service. But I would like to see that happen and that you, if you feel you need to move forward, I, I support that.
I would support that also, Eric. If we're going to do it, we got to get it right. And if you don't feel comfortable doing big place, big areas like that, then it's time to get somebody in to assist. It's, you know, can't keep throwing it on top of you. Let's get professionals in and get it right the first time.
We're not talking about major money here, right? And we're not talking about every subdivision. Did you have something?
I, I was going to note that, to, to the point that I think you've, a couple of you've made, we can probably pull together a, a sample report that, of what does that look like when another engineer has done that, say for the city of Dubuque or, or someplace like that. We can, I don't have one, but we can go get one and we can provide so that you would see what, what would that sort of report look like? What would that be?
That'd be great. Do you have anything further, Jake?
Nope.
Ian?
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, thanks for the time. I will try and craft, craft a, a, maybe a policy suggestion on, to Dubuque County as far as, you know, what, what these things might look like. And I, like I said, I can get a, an example of a, a report to see what it looks like. And then, and, and I, you know, I prefer to have Anthony, you know, chime in as well too. I mean, it's his signature. I'm not, like I said, I'm not the engineer. I'm, I'm confident and comfortable in the review process that we have in place. You know, I, I, I think it's worked well. But again, having, having Anthony comfortable with his signature and, and then diving into the implementation is, is something I'll be, I'll be bringing up later in the year, a li- a little bit more too on the enforcement side.
I, I don't see this being a I, I don't see this being a big policy, right? This is just saying some simple statements about when we're gonna go out to do this. I don't want this to, to add, um, another layer of, I mean, I don't want an ordinance and I don't want. I just want to see something in writing about when you're gonna use this and what we hope to get back. Kind of a purchase of services type statement is more what I'm looking for. Is that what you're thinking too Supervisor Wickham?
Well, maybe it's what Eric is proposing. This would be part of our stormwater ordinance, right?
Um, well, we have a stormwater ordinance checklist that we hand out, uh, you know, to, to the applicant and to the engineer. The things that we are, we're looking for in the review process. We could update that and just kind of put an independent third party review, you know. Would be, uh, you know, would be feasible or, or could come into the picture, I guess, uh, you know, under a certain. Lot size or certain, certain land use, um, you know, change, I guess. We could look at adding, adding that to our checklist to let them know that. Depending on, you know, the magnitude and what practices are being proposed. I mean, we offer them a lot of flexibility a- as far as what can be proposed. And typically in the pro- the, this process started, for example, in Country View, it started back in. Uh, October and November, when we sat down with them and started talking about ridge top development and, and what we'd like to see. And what practices, you know, could work. And they come back and they work with their engineer to try and come up with calculations and numbers and, and how everything's gonna kind of fit in. And, you know, it's been Dave Schneider, uh, has worked on the last two, Matt Shox, the engineer. They've been, they've been very supportive and very good to work with. Um, but again, it's just a matter of kind of assuring and confirming the numbers.
But Eric, I don't want you to add more to the ordinance or a checklist. I don't want this to be out there as if this is something that we have, we have to do or we must do. I see this as a, a behind the scenes, um, expert opinion or expert service that you need to hire. When you think it's beyond you or it's Anthony can't get to it. It's a, it's the flexibility to go hire somebody. I, I don't want to get trapped up in making the checklist.
Developers want to know what the rules of the game are. So the, the private. Citizen that was here, we said, hey, you didn't follow the rules. So, you know, people need to know what the rules are. And so if one of them is, if we're going to do a subdivision over ten acres. One of the processes is that we will have an independent review by an engineer. You need to disclose that upfront. So they know the processes and that report's gonna come and that report's gonna have weight. And it might say yes or might say no. And those are real life costs that developers occur and they want it and they have a timetable too. So they just want to know the rules. And if, I mean, I'm not objectionable of adding it to the stormwater ordinance. That doesn't bother me. Developers need to know and the citizens need to know what the rules are.
And I think those rules are already there. This is just that we can't always get the best answer because of our limited time and experience. If you think that's something we need to disclose, I don't, it's not something that isn't disclosable. I think it's trying to give breathing space as to who's gonna make that determination and where the expert number is gonna come from. But if that's necessary, Eric, to put that into the stormwater checklist or rules. So that you think it's carries better weight for you. And if that's Supervisor Wickham's concern, I have no problem with that at all.
Yeah, and, and keep in mind, there's, there's a, two P E's already signing off on it. So the private developer's gonna have one, professional engineer, and then the county's gonna have one and sign off. And we have a backup if we need it. So it's not like this, you know, there, there's no review currently with the process. And so that's the one thing I'm just, you know, cautioning is, you know, you don't want too many of these reviews and too many of these, you know, opinions. Or it stymies development and you need to have it be fair and balanced. And so what you're requesting, I think, is in line to that. I would just say disclose it that here's the process. And if it's over ten acres, a large site, we want to have an independent review. I'm, I'm okay with that. It just should be part of the process.
I don't know if he's saying independent review though, Jay. I think he's saying instead of their review, it will be a hired review. It's not a, a third P E weighing in. It is one that's working with the county weighing in. And then the private developer would have one too. So I think it's, it's our P E will be sometimes a hired, a hired professional engineer that we use. Instead of doing it in-house. So it's not a third independent. It's us hiring our own to assist in our skills. Am I, am I right? Is it two or three? What are we looking at here?
Well, it would still be the two. A- Anthony will always sign the improvement plans in the final plat. Um, you know, he's just saying, I don't have time to do the in-depth analysis review. And, and I, so I, I, you know, my, my current position and my role is to offer feedback. Uh, on practices being proposed and the overall stormwater calculation design. So essentially, I'm not asking for a third party engineer to sign off. I'm just asking for them to review the calcs and the, and the, Anthony ultimately is still gonna sign off on these improvement plans in the final plat. We still have a county engineer signing off on these. Um, but I think if we tag team it between myself and another professional engineer on practices and bouncing, bouncing the ideas. And, and discussing more of this actual stormwater calcs with each other. It, it's not just coming just from me, uh, you know, just right now, it's myself directly telling the. You know, the applicant, this is what you can and can't do. And based on the numbers that are submitted. These projects can get rather expensive for, for contractors. But I'm, in, in this site, you know, we, we went over what language is going to be included in the improvement plans. I feel much more comfortable, you know, been doing this a while. I've learned in each one that we've done and, and, and we've gotten better. And, you know, not, I'm just to the point now where on these larger ones. I believe it would be helpful to have a third party engineer review, uh, and confirm to submit that to Anthony. So that, you know. Five, ten years down the road, a neighbor calls and says, how could you have let this happen? How can the county approve these roads? And how can these, all these drain tiles and pipes, you know, that have eroded my property now? And, and this is exactly what's happened in the past. We have documentation. We've had engineers out there. So that, I believe the heavy side that needs to take place is the enforcement and the implementation stage. And maybe that's where, you know, what Jay was, was, was referencing, where does this fit? Maybe it fits right there when we update the ordinance and we update, uh, you know, just the policies. It's spelled out in, in, in the actual ordinance and in the, in the submittals at that time. And we could do that right when we're updating kind of our enforcement procedures.
Sounds like you have a way forward.
Yes, yep.
Sounds good to me, but.
All right. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Eric.
Next, we have a, our eleven o'clock work session with DA Davidson to present requested debt information to the board.
Yes, good morning. Uh, this is Auditor Dragato. We have Michael Maloney, uh, who just has a very short presentation, I think, uh, on the request of the board. Uh, regarding, uh, debt. So the, uh, table is yours.
Hi folks, and, uh, good to see everybody again here. Uh, as Kevin mentioned, I'll be brief. I'm going to provide a brief summary to answer Supervisor Wickham's, uh, queries from a week ago. And then just share a brief update on the timeline and I will let you get on with the rest of your day. So going to just screen share right now, uh, some content for you. Uh, hopefully everyone can see this. Um, it's a very simple summary table. The question was in regards to some of the thought process in, uh, twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen. And what we're carrying forward for the refinancing for the Dubuque area, uh, solid waste agency. And the county's support of those financings as the conduit. Uh, before getting into the details, I want to just reiterate the fact that in twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen. As well as what we're proposing for the refinancing in twenty twenty-two. The solid waste agency is responsible for all costs of the financing, um, through the county. So just want to make sure that was clear. The three items we discussed in prior correspondence, uh, from the memo recently provided for the board. But also the baseline for analysis in twenty fourteen and twenty sixteen had three metrics involved. Uh, the first was credit rating. The second was debt capacity and the third was BQ or bank qualification status. And the combination of these made it clear that the county would be the most advantageous conduit. For the solid waste agencies borrowing. In detail, as summarized here on the page, um, the county has a larger tax base and a lower debt burden. And that directly relates to the credit rating. So the county's double A two rating through Moody's is one notch stronger than the city's credit rating of double A three. The credit rating determines the credit spread and the, and therefore the better the rating, the lower interest cost for the borrower. I explained that debt capacity has a role in this rating score, uh, from the rating agencies, in this case Moody's. Um, but it also goes to tax base as well. In Iowa states, uh, or any taxing entity is limited to, uh, no more than five percent of their actual. So a hundred percent assessed valuation in terms of bonding. So when we talk about capacity, that's the percentage of that five percent total. Um, the city's at thirty-three percent. I think historically has maybe been a little bit higher than that. The county's at six percent and has historically been a little bit lower than that. So that was part of the decision as well, not just the lower cost. While this does flow into the rating consideration, but just the, uh, leveraging of the balance sheet between the two entities. Uh, the third and, and perhaps the most important item here would be, uh, BQ or bank qualification status. Bank qualification is an IRS regulation that allows certain small issuers each calendar year. The ability to have investors in their bonds deduct additional interest cost, which helps lower the cost of borrowing. So, uh, this is resets every calendar year and a small issuer is one deemed to be issuing no more than ten million dollars in that calendar year. Uh, the city has often been a non-bank qualified issuer on their own debt. So I mentioned a, a few years that are shown there. While the county historically is either not issued debt or when they've issued, have had issues under ten million dollars for the year. With I think maybe one or two exceptions. So, um, that capacity there for the additional tax break combined with the lower credit rating has made this more advantageous. Um, I'll just reiterate the summary here to be clear and, and it's on the page. But, you know, the county, uh, being less burdened and providing a lower cost financing option for the solid waste agency. Has led to the decision historically for the county to be the conduit for their financings in fourteen and sixteen. And why we believe it's advantageous for that to be reprised here in twenty twenty-two. Uh, that's probably longer than I meant to talk or anybody wanted to hear me talk. But I wanted to at least get that provided and ask if there's any questions from the board or staff before a brief timeline review. And then we'll send everybody on their way today.
Good. Jay, I have no questions. Thank you.
Ian? Nothing more.
Excuse me. I have nothing either, Michael. Thank you very much.
You bet. Um, rather than, uh, taking too much time, I'll just say, uh, in talking with the attorneys, this is a busy time of year for those folks. Um, because this, the county and solid waste agencies process is not, uh, something that we need to hurry through. We moved back the initial public hearing process by a week. So you'll see proceedings from your bond attorney, Dorsey and Whitney for next Monday's meeting. I'll leave it right there, but everything else is on pace and moving on schedule. All right?
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
All right, folks. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you.
We'll go to the boards, commissions and supervisors update. Start, we have, uh, county conference board Wednesday at three thirty. Will you be able to make that, Jay?
I'm looking at the city one as well, so.
Yeah, that's at four thirty, cause I am.
Four forty-five is the other one.
I'm going to be out of town. I'm, a friend of mine passed away in South Dakota, so I'm leaving tomorrow and coming back Wednesday night. I won't be able to make that.
I will be present in, as vice chair will chair that.
You will chair it, okay.
Yeah, well, the city isn't chaired by me.
One vote or two votes? Anyone remember on that?
Pardon me?
And then you get one or two votes?
We have one, we have one vote on each.
Is that right? Okay.
Um, Mayor Kavanaugh will chair the city conference board. It's just the county conference board. But if there's not two supervisors, we don't form our own quorum to have a vote, so.
Okay, so we, we have a quorum and then you get one vote.
So we'll have a quorum making a vote. I'm looking at the auditor if that's a, that's the nature of the conference board.
Yeah, I'll do some, uh, I'll do some digging and if required, we'll have somebody present.
I, I plan to attend. I'm just wondering the process. Sometimes I forget. And whether it's one or two votes we get and how that works.
Apologize for not being able to attend that. I think that's really all I had to, uh. Bring up at this time, just to get that taken care of.
I wanted to look ahead to March eleventh if we could. Um, we have all been invited, I believe all of us have been invited to participate in the Farm Bureau. Um, legislative, um, event, ten to noon at, at Bright Box. So it's a Friday. I'm intending to go, um, and so I'm, I'm again looking at the auditor to say, we answer questions from.
I will be, I will be attending that one.
Okay.
That one, I will definitely be.
Yeah.
I know I will.
I was kind of figuring on attending that one also, so.
So then that means Ed will have to be at the UCC. Routinely are, but if Harley and I are not there, it's a, it's ten to twelve. So it would bump our ability to be on the UCC call.
I'll be on that, that.
Are you out of town? Is that an issue? The ten, or excuse me, on the eleven?
No, I'm just saying I might go to Bright Box too and just, just be in UCC via their wifi.
Awesome. You do that. We won't be able to do that.
Right, right. Of course not. But, but I, I mean, I'll see, but maybe I'll do both.
I've never tried wifi at Bright Box. Have you been up there to do wifi?
I'll find out about it.
Never been on the wifi, I guess. I'm up there and watch a TV, watch a football game.
Okay.
And I'll get with, uh, I'll get with Ed to get a little more information about this, this event, to find out if we need to publish in advance. Um, so if, if, if it's gonna be an official meeting, then we'll publish it like we would any other official board supervisor.
I, and I was not aware of that, so.
One other thing, uh, Sunday, there's, uh, breakfast at Holy Grass Fire and Piastasentria also has a breakfast.
They're drive-throughs, aren't they?
Yeah.
Interesting to see how we do that. Drive-through.
Jake?
You have anything? No, I'm good.
I have a couple of other things if I might. Okay, just to do, I, I'm drawn to your attention before the issue with Northeast Iowa Agency on Aging and the Upworth question. About getting meals out to seniors and getting food boxes. Uh, they came back with their decision. They're not going to, to allow us to do food boxes. So we're pursuing other things that Silkers and, and the food pantry in Upworth had asked me to check into that. It didn't go the kind of the way we wanted it to. They're, they're looking for these food hubs that, that, that they talked about when they were here as part of their fun ten. You know, they want a food hub. They want everyone to go to a, a food cafe. Well, there isn't a cafe in Upworth. So, um, anyway, it, we didn't go the way we wanted it to, but it was good conversation and looking for other things.
Um, there's a food policy meeting.
Today?
Today at four o'clock and actually I had, uh, talked with Silkers. Steve and Larry Silker and Tim Greenwood are both gonna be on that. They, they wanted to be part of that, uh. Also to help with that, so.
And at the DMATS meeting last week, um. The group did agree, we are going to be joining in some conversation with the city of Dubuque about the Canadian Pacific Railroad. So that issue is gonna, DMATS is gonna be the vehicle for that. Um, and I just, Anthony is gonna. Reach back out to us if there's a meeting that we should attend and get questions on. But that's moving forward. Um, I'm gonna reach out to ISAC in Des Moines and then also down to Jack Wiley. In McCoka, uh, excuse me, the Jackson County Supervisor to try to, again, bring more. Interest in what will happen when that, if those railroads merge, we'll have more stops and more traffic and, and that kind of thing. So it's not in any way trying to stop progress, but just to make sure that our voices are present. There's that and that's moving on. It will come back to us. Um, at the East Central Regional Governing Board, they did approve our Clark University, um, mental health. Training for higher education. So that got approved. That should be underway, should be done with that, uh, issue for now. And then I just wanted everyone to be aware, I was on a first judicial meeting, um, board meeting. New person, so I got appointed to the executive board. It's fine, um, as that happens. But there's a lot of, um. Inside our, um, facilities and Elm Street too, just delayed maintenance. Which is becoming very concerning to their, to their budget. And so just when you look at Department of Corrections budgets from the state of Iowa. Extraordinary maintenance needed, windows, flooring. I think it deals probably more likely with facilities in, in Waterloo, but. It's gonna impact everybody's budget. We don't pay for that. gonna impact everybody's budget. We don't pay for that as a county, but it could impact how many, how much, how service rich we are and what goes on. Yeah. I mentioned it in part because you're here, Sheriff Kennedy.
Yeah. Keep in mind, when they have to do maintenance and they don't have budget for it, a lot of times what they end up doing is they fill a position and then they use that money for the unfilled position to to do the maintenance. So I think if our building here at Elm Street might be in better condition than we want in Waterloo, but that doesn't mean that our services are getting affected here. Because in order to keep the or maintain the building upkeep and everything, they have to, they have to not hire full, their full staff at times in order to do that. So you know, that's something to consider. You include the maintenance portion of it. There is also the manpower portion that is needed.
So I guess now there's something that's that I need to be aware of. Pretty, I keep focused on Waterloo, which is where First Edition happens.
Yeah, and I, I've never been to their their halfway house, but my understanding is it's pretty, pretty bad shit, especially compared to ours, ours is pretty fortunate here with ours.
We did do our interviews for the building. So that'll come back through Anthony through, it's all confidential right now. So it'll come back through Anthony. Probably in the next few weeks, we'll know the result.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the time.
We have a closed session. Starting at 11:30 here.
Can I ask, while we're still here in the public space, are all three supervisors going to be attending?
That will be in closed session.
I will be in the closed session. Supervisor Wickham, will you be joining us?
Chelsea, let's get in, let's get going.
Need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved. You want to read the proclamation stuff? Iowa code stuff?
Yep. In compliance with Iowa Code Section 21.4, board of supervisors' meetings agendas are posted. Closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 21.5 parentheses J, for the purpose of discussing the purchase of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could reasonably be expected to increase the price, the government body would have to pay for that property. We have a motion.
I'll make a second.
And a second to go into closed session. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 If the board can give us just a minute while we prepare the room.